You ready? All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December Watertown School District School Board Meeting. And I previously called the meeting to order prior to our executive session, which began at 5:00 and ended at 5:19. And so now we'll, I'll call the regular meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Under the consent agenda, item 3.1, roll call. Please note that all board members are present this evening. Carrie Lore is joining us by phone and the other four of us are here in person. Item 3.2, are there any conflicts of interest to disclose this evening by the board members? Okay. Moving on to item 3.3, we need a review and approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
I move or approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Stein. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, 3.4 on our agenda is a resignation.
Yes, I bring before the board a resignation from Lakeia Maddox. She is our Director of Nutrition Services. That is effective January 31, 2022.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the resignation of Lakeeta Maddox as Nutrition Services Director for the 21-22 school year pursuant to the settlement agreement signed by Ms. Maddox on December 10, 2021.
I move acceptance as presented by the Board President.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Iverson. Do we have any comments or questions on that agenda item?
I do. I've got some comments that I'd like to make here. I have prepared a script, normally not a script guy, but want to stay on point and be respectful of everyone's time. So here are my comments this evening. Having served on the school board for nearly seven years and currently the second longest tenured board member serving, the challenge the district has faced with our food services program this year is right up there with one of the most difficult that I've encountered in my time on the board. In an effort to stand point accurate with my comments, I'd like to share a list of what I believe to be facts on the current situation. We, as in the board, the district, the community, the parents, the kids, and our kitchen staff all want to serve a healthy meal and a quality meal each and every day. That's our common ground. No one comes to work each day trying to scheme ways in which to fall short of this goal. I've heard from exactly eight people through email or in person regarding their concerns on food services. In terms of how this compares to other issues going on in the district and my previous six and a half years on the board, this is right up there with the most community concern. Contacting administration or the school board are the most effective and quickest ways to affect change. Keep in mind that change doesn't always happen as quick as we'd all like it to at times. I went on my own fact-finding mission that started on December 1. I decided I was going to have lunch throughout the district without letting any of the schools or the administration know where I was heading. I figured that this would be the best way to have an honest assessment of the situation. I visited with the high school, I visited the high school twice and every other school except Mullet Elementary. I ran out of time. And Mr. Stacy, if you'd please pull up the pictures of the lunches that I was able to have. This being the first one at the high school and then you can just scroll down. This will be the second one at the high school. That was Lincoln, Intermediate School, Middle School. Losing track now, Jefferson, I believe, McKinley, and then today at Roosevelt. So you can scroll through those again if you'd like to, Mr. Stacy, while I'm proceeding with my comments. But my first stop was at December 1 at the high school. I have two concerns. The fries were cold. I shared that with the kitchen staff. It sounds like keeping fries warm for hundreds of students poses a challenge. Not impossible, but it is a challenge. And the other concern I had is that I couldn't quite catch the kid that kept throwing pretzels at our table. He threw them three times, just about had him narrowed in. Sorry. The students that I sat with at the high school said, "I picked a good day to visit," but that I needed to look out for that Asian chicken the next day. So I decided to come back to the high school the very next day. The food itself was fine. It wouldn't have been my first choice, but the actual food itself was fine. As for the next several stops and the rest of the meals throughout the district, all of the food was perfectly fine. There was no mold. There were no expiration date issues. The food temperatures were all in line. Enough food to fill up an active 39-year-old guy. Each day I sent those pictures to a close group and the general consensus amongst the group was that the food being served and the quantity seemed acceptable. Everyone's picky about the foods they eat to some degree. Of all the options available, in particular fruits and vegetables, we can't dictate what students elect to eat or put on their plate. It's easy to make the lunch options look poor by simply electing not to show it's all available. We've lost some very valuable and talented food service personnel. Their experience is not easily replaceable and their absence is making this situation even more challenging to get back on track. We can't comment on personnel-related issues in a public meeting. We also can't disclose the details of all the hours and hours of conversations and meetings that have already occurred and will continue for the foreseeable future. Our remaining kitchen managers are committed to our kids. I often heard, "That's our why." Okay? Meaning despite the current obstacles, serving the kids is what keeps them going. To do so, they are taking on responsibilities and tasks that they haven't had to in the past because not doing so means failing to put a good quality meal in front of our kids each day. They take this responsibility seriously. And my sincerest appreciation goes out to them for their loyalty and dedication to our kids. Hearing their passion and concern on the situation stood out to me over the last couple of weeks, but put simply, they care. Communication of the lunch menu needs immediate improvement. This is so controllable, yet as a district, we have failed in this simple task too often. I had lunch with two of my kids at Lincoln separately on December 3, and they literally each said to me, two separate occasions, "Dad, if we would have just known that it was pizza, we wouldn't have packed a lunch." It's my understanding and expectation that this should be corrected going forward. As a district, and likely contrary to popular belief, overall participation rates have actually increased year over year in our lunch program by 3%. These are the facts that I've been able to observe firsthand, not through Facebook or word of mouth or hearsay, but firsthand as a member of the school board. Generally speaking, I believe that the food is adequate and acceptable. With eight random school visits over the last nine school days, I don't have any formal issues or complaints with the food that I was served. I left each lunch filled up, oftentimes eating more and better foods than I would have at home for lunch, specifically the fruits and vegetables. Again, my sincerest, again, my sincerest thanks goes out to the kitchen staff for a job well done, given the circumstances. The challenge we're facing is behind the scenes. It's in the organization, the ordering, the communication, the planning, the morale of the current staff, and hiring of additional staff. Greater variety in our food, specifically in the number of times we've served chicken, is something that we need to give consideration to. Again, generally speaking, and in summary of the current state of affairs as it relates to food services, I believe our food quality is acceptable. I'm going to shift into my opinion section of my comments. In today's day and age, while I get that it is easy to go online and post a picture of our lunch or formulate your own opinions and share those online on the situation, share those online of the situation, I just want to point out that there may be and likely will be some unintended consequences. Collectively, we all want the same thing. We want good quality meals, served consistently. But if we create such a negative environment regarding food services, we may have staff leave simply because they don't want to put up with being associated with the district or food services. Finding staff is difficult enough the way that it is, and we obviously need staff to help serve the kids. Creating this negative environment certainly won't help in recruitment efforts. So how can we balance the need for bringing awareness to the situation to create change without making the issue worse? To me, the answer to that question is professional and rational communication between all parties. Gathering facts, not making assumptions. Presenting information to the administration or to the school board in a positive, respectful manner. It is possible to create change without being negative. I'd like to encourage you to visit one of the schools and have lunch for yourself. Scope it out, draw your own unbiased conclusions. You'll likely see the same things that I observed. Some students liked the food, yes, even the Asian chicken, and others didn't. Or like today, with the pasta that I was served, I liked it. The kids that I sat with liked it. My wife texted me, said the kids hate, our kids hated it. You'll find that some kids eat the fruits and vegetables that are offered and some didn't. Understand that we'll never have 100% success rate in pleasing every kid or every parent. And I believe that that would be true even with the meals that others have posted online from other districts. I'd like to request Dr. Danielson, share what he can regarding the changes upcoming in food services. It's important that the community, staff, board, that we all hear what the next steps are. And then it'll be up to the board to ensure that the plan and next steps are followed.
Thanks, Stuart. I will let you just move on from there.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Madam President. So from a district standpoint, we just accepted the resignation of our food service or our Nutrition Services Director. We would begin an immediate search for her replacement. Later on in the meeting, we are going to be requesting an additional position, that is, an Assistant Director of Nutrition Services. Again, if approved by this board, we would begin an immediate search for that. We have looked at some of the duties, evaluated those, the positions that we have in place and kind of the controls we have, and are requesting this additional position to help with the communication between buildings. We can see that that was a, you know, a major hurdle this fall was some of the communication things. And so we're looking for people with an emphasis in that. For the foreseeable future, we are working the menu posting through the district office. Just want the public to know that does not, that there is the recognition that the current situation may still cause change, those supply chain issues, getting the proper product in and be able to formulate a menu, but doing our best to at least have it posted accurately and timely so that people can see what is for lunch. We want to continue to work with our current food service staff and any new hires to ensure proper food safety, the menu planning and portions that are per the age group regulations through the federal food service program, and also continue to work with our State Office of Child and Adult Nutrition Services as well as our local health inspectors to ensure the safety and satisfaction in our kitchens. And then also be making a little bigger announcement as we get closer to the new year. But we do want to invite parents to join their child for lunch. We'll have some more details about that, but we have to get kind of some of the logistics of how that will work, and that will be something that we'll be announcing for after January 1, when we come back with just some prior notice and how the logistics of that will work to have that many more people in. So we have been working behind the scenes and I appreciate the feedback we've gotten and, you know, the communications I've had. I know there's been some frustrations and we were not ignoring them. We were trying to get things, you know, set, working with the parameters we have and ask for continued patience with some of that, but also some, a little bit of grace as we work through some things that are out of our control, beyond the school walls in terms of the product availability and some of that. But also now, after Mr. Stein mentioned that we did lose some very valuable food service employees, trying to get those positions filled and keep them filled so that we have enough people to serve eight different schools every day for lunch.
Thank you, Dr. Danielson. My notes pretty much reflect a lot of what Stuart said, so I won't rehash too much of it. But I would just like to thank the staff that have been working through this to ensure that our students are being fed, all the way from our kitchen managers, the kitchen personnel, the lunchroom personnel, the delivery drivers that are getting them there. We appreciate your patience and flexibility and understanding as we move forward with this into what's to come. And also I want to compliment your kids in the district that I got to sit with on the, I went, I also went and had meals with the kids five different times in the last couple of weeks. And that was the best part of it, was sitting down with the kids because that's who we're doing it for. And I tell you, that conversation I had at a table of kindergarteners, that was fun. I was a high school teacher and there's a reason I was a high school teacher because I couldn't do that every day, but it was fun during that time. So is there any other comments from the board regarding this? All right, well, we're still under item 3.4, the accepting the resignation. We have a motion and a second to do so. So all in favor of accepting the resignation signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move on to 3.5 and we need to approve the minutes of the November 8 board meeting. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Iverson. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I gotta wait for Carrie. Opposed? Motion carries. 3.6, receive the financial reports for November 2021, Mrs. Clausen.
Thank you. Thank you. In the general fund, taxes received in the amount of $3,493,704 are the final significant portion of the 2020 taxes payable in 2021. The monthly state aid payment in the amount of $1,017,872 is the adjusted monthly payment after fall enrollment counts were confirmed in September. Expenditures were moderate for the month with the payroll expenditures reflecting a decline due to the board-approved premium free month. Receding of the CARES allocations in previous months creates an influx of 7% in ending cash balance over previous years. This influx will be accounted for at fiscal year-end when determining transfer in from the Capital Outlay Fund. In Capital Outlay, the receding of $2.3 million in taxes makes up in large part this fund's revenue. The expenses include a construction in progress payment in which will be relatively consistent each month as we move through the high school remodel. When the Capital Outlay certificate is maintained from the cash balance, this fund is operating above that of the prior two years. Special education consisted of revenue related to the November property taxes along with adjusted state aid. The ending cash position reflects improvement over the prior two years. Tuition and fees in relation to the first semester continue to be received in the fund of Lake Area Technical College. Expenditures exceeded revenue for the month as typical for November. This fund's ending cash position reflects an increase over the previous two years. The amounts reflected within financial aid are related to the receipt of funds from the federal government to accommodate grants and financial assistance to Lake Area Technical College students. The premium free month created claims and administrative costs to exceed revenue generation in the Employee Benefit Trust. This fund's ending cash position reflects a decline due to the savings generation provided on the district side of premiums. In the operation of the district's enterprise funding, revenue and expenditures were moderate and related to the activity pertained under each fund. I would be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Clausen on the financials? Okay, if not, we'll move on to 3.7 and student-staff recognitions.
Thank you. We do have some students to be recognized this evening from our 11AA football team. So from the 2021 Class 11AA All-State Team and Academic All-State. The Arrow Football Team was Academic All-State Team, Academic All-State. Ben Althoff was All-State as well as an Academic All-State. Colin Dingzer was Academic All-State. Evan Hamery was Academic All-State. Cole Holden was a member of the All-State Team as well as Academic All-State. Peyton Johnson, a member of the All-State Team. Gavin Mooney was Academic All-State. Drew Norberg was an All-State Honorable Mention as well as Academic All-State. Reese Stark was Academic All-State. Spencer Stock, Academic All-State. And Hunter Winches was an All-State Honorable Mention player. Thank you.
All right. Now, next we'll move on to item 4 on the agenda and the discussion items for Lake Area Tech. 4.1, is there any public input on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area this evening? Okay, then we'll move on to item 4.2, which is a legislative update for Lake Area Tech.
Yes, ma'am. Just very briefly, I want to give you a little bit of insights, particularly providing the governor's budget brief last week. Next slide, please. In the governor's brief, she set the FY '23 budget to include a 6% increase to the inflationary rate for both our per-student allocation and our instructor salary support. I do want to caution you, the numbers on the screen are for the system, not just Lake Area Tech. So the, our per-student allocation will go up to $39.97, but the instructor salary support, that's, that $3 million will be for the, for Technical. Lake Area Tech will receive about 38% of that because we constitute about 38% of the students in the state in technical education. Also, they also, the governor also recommended an increase to our maintenance and repair. This is a planned increase that takes, that moves us forward towards a better compromise between the state and local on providing that maintenance and repair for our buildings. On the one-time funding, we're very pleased to see that the governor provided for Lake Area Tech's archway complex. This will be the next building after the current building that we're working on that will span from the north side, then it'll connect the north campus and the south campus. So we're pleased to see that that's in the governor's budget and we hope to retain that through the legislative process. Next slide, please. Of course, there are a couple of items that weren't addressed on the governor's budget that the system will need. The continued support for the instructor salary funding, there is a request to increase that. The increase that you saw in the previous slide is only a 6% increase of the amount of the raise. It's not 6% increase of their salaries. So it's a little bit different when you understand the nuances. We need some additional support on instructor salaries. And also we're requesting one-time funds for continued equipment, which is really at the heart and soul of it. Technical education is the ability for our students to get access to that equipment. So that's kind of a quick summary of what we anticipate will be the key points for this legislative session. I would certainly stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions there? Well, thank you, Mr. Courtney.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the action items for Lake Area. And under Personnel, 5.1.1, we have the resignations.
Yes, ma'am. We recommend your approval of the one recommendation with the assessment of the penalty for breaking the contract early.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I move approval of the resignation as presented.
A motion by Mr. Stein.
I will second that.
And a second by Mrs. Lore. Any comments or questions there? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 5.1.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Yes, ma'am. You see a series of contract recommendations and addendums, fairly typical for this time of the year. One exception is the, you'll notice that we do, we are doing a position modification for our librarian that increases the number of days and also expands their supervisory duties. And so we'd recommend your acceptance of those contract modifications and recommendations for this as presented.
All right, could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Lore to accept the contract recommendations and addendums. Any questions there? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 5.1.3, the authority to hire.
Yes, ma'am. We are requesting an addition of two positions. One is an aviation instructor. That particular flight instructor would be for unmanned aerial vehicles. And this is the program that we've seen extensive interest originally on. We are bringing this to you early because of the increased demand for those positions in the workforce. And we also are requesting a commercial truck driver license instructor as we see the need across the United States continuing to grow for experienced, or for truck drivers. Right now, their estimate is they're about 80,000 truck drivers short across the U.S. So we request your approval of those two positions.
All right, could we have a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the authority to hire.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
I will second.
And a second by Mrs. Lore. Any comments or questions on those two authorities to hire? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to the items under 5.2 on property. First of all, 5.2.1, consider the bids on the diesel building expansion.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech recommends that you accept the sole bid from Gray Construction for our diesel expansion project. Their bid was $7,772,000. Of that, approximately 6 million, I'm sorry, I said 1,007,772,000. Of that, 600 or 6,990,000 would go for the building itself. The other 1.7 approximate is for renovations and additional classrooms that are outside of that building. The total project, when you include the fees and contingencies, is approximately $8.1 million. We request that we have allowance for Lake Area Tech to negotiate with Gray Construction if the favorable price is not to exceed the bid price. And we request your approval of that bid.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Iverson to accept the diesel building expansion bid.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Moulton. Any comments or questions on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 5.2.2, consider the bids for mills and lathes.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech recommends that you accept the sole bid from Productivity Incorporated for six manual mills and six manual lathes. The total of the bid was $176,487 without the additional labor and warranty. This bid meets all the expectations and it is below our estimated cost of $200,000. This bid will, this equipment will support our Upskills program through grant in FY '22. And we recommend your acceptance of these bids.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move acceptance of the bid from Productivity Incorporated for mills and lathes.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Is there comments or questions?
Mr. Courtney, could you just elaborate a bit on Upskills program, what that is?
Yes, ma'am. The Upskills program is a program that the governor has put forth that offers short-term certificates for people to more quickly and readily enter the workforce. So you may be working at, say, as a welder and you want to move over to be a machinist, then you can take the shorter program, which would be the Upskills program, to be able to Upskill and move across.
All right, we have the motion and the second, all in favor of approving the bids for the mills and lathes. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 5.2.3, consider- 5.2.3, consider the sealed bids for the surplus machine, surplus precision machines?
Yes ma'am, Lake Area Tech requested sealed bids to sell some of our surplus equipment. We recommend you accept the high bids from Daryl Gross and E.T. Monson for each of the five surplus pieces of equipment. The bids totaled $19,550.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move that we accept this bid, the high bid, from Daryl Gross and E.T. Monson.
Motion by Mr. Iverson. And a second by Ms. Moulton to accept the sealed bids for the surplus precision machines. Any comments or questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 5.2.4, authority to purchase equipment, a nursing mannequin.
Yes ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests the authority to sole source purchase a mannequin from Lairdell. These are mannequins that we've used for a number of years in all of our simulations and work curriculum that the students do is centered around these particular style of mannequins. The estimated cost is $120,000 and we request permission to purchase this equipment through the sole source procurement process.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I move that we approve authority to purchase equipment of the nursing mannequin as presented.
Motion by Ms. Moulton. And a second by Mr. Iverson, comments or questions on the equipment purchase? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 5.2.5, authority to bid equipment.
Yes ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests authority to build a welding, or bid a welding simulator. That is estimated to cost approximately $62,000 to support our welding program. And also, to support our electronic vehicles program, we request permission to purchase electronic vehicles at approximately $75,000. These items were budgeted in our Perkins Equipment allocation.
All right, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Iverson. And a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the authority to bid these pieces of equipment. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Finally, 5.2.6, consider lease agreements?
Yes ma'am, Lake Area Tech often receives lease agreements for equipment to enable our students to have access to the latest and greatest equipment. In this particular case, we have two pieces of equipment that are being replaced. The equipment that we are using has been sold by the company and they're replacing that equipment. One piece is for our heavy equipment operator and the other is for our diesel technician programs. So, we recommend your approval of the new leases.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the lease agreements as presented for heavy equipment.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Iverson, is there any comments or questions on that agenda item? Hearing none, all in favor of approving these two lease agreements?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, President Courtney.
Thank you ma'am, and happy holidays.
You too. All right, now we're going to move on to the discussion items for the K-12 side of things. First of all, we've got Item 6.1, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items? All right, if not, we'll move on to Item 6.2 on the Northeast Tech High School report.
Thank you. The Board of Superintendents did not meet in December. We'll meet again here coming up after the new year in January. And a reminder for those of you that are on the Northeast Tech Board, we meet on Wednesday night, 5:45.
Okay, thank you for that information. And now, we're up to 6.3 and the alternative education update.
Good evening, my name is Jen Heath and I am the Special Services Director for the Watertown School District. I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you a little bit about the progress that we've made in the ALL-ED Committee. So, in the strategic plan for the Watertown School District, under Indicator E, it states to explore ways to improve services for at-risk students K-12, with the ultimate goal being to review and define our current services, qualifications, and procedures. And then, under the indicators, we have to review and define the alternative education services K-12 qualifications and procedures. Number two, explore alternative education models at each level. Number three, assess staffing needs and support for ALL-ED services. Number four, review and standardize data collection, including office referrals, student intervention plan needs, positive behavior intervention supports data. And then, number five, to review and expand services to assist all staff as they address needs of at-risk students. So, our current committee members are listed there and we're looking forward to having Mr. Iverson join us in December. We've only had two meetings. We met in October and November on the third Tuesdays of the month from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Garfield Education Center. So, we have a cross group of individuals who are currently teaching in the ALL-ED classrooms. We have administrators and we just have a really good group of individuals who are all committed to the process of improving the ALL-ED program in the district. The overall goal of the committee is to establish a quality alternative education program that provides the necessary tools and resources to effectively meet the needs of our learners. So, in October, in our first meeting, we discussed the profile of a learner. And what that means is we looked at the characteristics of the current students that we have attending our alternative education programs, including at the intermediate school, our K-6 program, we looked at our middle school, we looked at our behavior programs at the high school level that are mainly special education students. And then, we also looked at the students that are receiving services in the ARC. So, we had a small group that was able to go to Aberdeen and visit the CARES program, which is alternative education program for elementary students in Aberdeen. And in parentheses, I listed the indicators that those activities met for the strategic plan. And then, in November, we started looking at programming and systems of support at each level, meaning what types of resources do we need to look at to help our students at each level, whether they be community resources, outside agencies, counselors, mental health service providers, just integral parts of those systems and supports. We also had a Zoom meeting with administrators from Joe Foss in Sioux Falls to discuss program options and ask questions regarding their program development. And again, the indicators are listed there. So, in the next steps, we have our December meeting coming up next Tuesday in which we will talk about the entrance process, how students get referred to alternative education program. January 18th, we'll talk about the exit process because ultimately, we want students to return to the general education setting. In February, we'll talk about staffing and professional development needs. And then, on March 15th, we'll put it all together and have recommendations for you to consider for the program. Does anybody have any questions that I can attempt to answer?
Sure. Good evening, Dr. Heath. I want to thank your committee and you for accepting this mission. It's been overdue for a long time to evaluate and to make action recommendations concerning alternative education. Both Mr. Iverson and I were teaching at the high school in the 1990s before alternative education programs were in place. And then, after their placement, and finally, in 2007, when the alternative education programs Nova and Eclipse were disbanded. So, we know firsthand the before and after impact of these programs. Alternative education helps four groups. Group one, those students that enter it. Group two, the remaining student population. Group three, staff, teachers, and administrators. And group four, the community. Recently, I had a conversation with another retired teacher. We discussed the merits of alternative education programs. He mentioned he knew two young men, one who became a plumber and the other who actually owns his own business. Both these young men stated that alternative education programs saved their lives. They knew that they were directly headed to the state penitentiary and those programs turned them around completely. The basis of community policing, for example, is to address misdemeanors immediately and effectively, otherwise crime spreads. School populations are no different. Bad behavior can spread like a virus when it's not addressed effectively. It's a hard fact to face, but from 2007, we had a mass exodus of staff and teachers. I've kept a long list. One vital component of alternative education, especially for the high school and the middle school, is that it should be housed off-campus in another building. The work of this committee is going to go forward to be a long-lasting impact on the district and students and staff and the community as a whole. As a side note, we do still have two staff members who worked with Eclipse, who are still employed by the district and I would highly recommend that this committee would visit, spend time with them. So, I want to really thank you for your effort of you and your group.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions? For Dr. Heath? Okay, if not, thank you very much for your presentation and I look forward to hearing from you as we continue moving through that process. All right, then we'll move to 6.4, which is a review of the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you. The American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund was established in response to the immense challenges facing students, educators, staff, schools, and districts in preparing for and responding to COVID-19. The funds are for a wide array of activities to address diverse needs arising from the pandemic or to emerge stronger post-pandemic. The district was awarded funds in the amount of $4,679,132 and are to be obligated by September 30th, 2024, therefore spanning over the current fiscal year '22 and the following two years into fiscal year 2024. The plan is subject to be reviewed by the school board and with the public every six months. The district approved the plan at the August 9th board meeting and the plan was submitted and approved by the South Dakota Department of Education on October 7th. Please note that the full plan is available on the district website. The review of this plan includes amendments to include financial impacts of an increase to technology supports for the enhancement of learning and the amount of $95,000 to accommodate the full accommodation to the elementary buildings with interactive panels and a decrease of $95,000 to the opportunities for extended learning in the category of early learning initiatives, leaving the accommodation of $138,942 to address any initiatives in support of the early learning program. As a reminder, the initial approved plan includes identified funding opportunities as outlined to include summer school and early learning initiatives, an accommodation to online learning instruction, as well as funding to support ongoing and continuation of literacy coaches, interventionists, instructional coaches, academic recovery, and social emotional curriculum, as well as technology. The funding requires that 20% or $935,826 be set aside to accommodate learning loss. The Watertown School District intends to invest 60% in academic impact loss instructional time, with the other 40% identified under investments in other allowed activities specific to technology supports. As a reminder, our SR3 funding, which includes the requirement of the American Rescue Plan, spans over a three-year funding period. Should the plan, as presented and amended, require a change, the information related to the change will be noted and approved through future school board meetings and at a minimum every six months. The full plan will be made available on the district website. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mrs. Claussen. Next, we have 6.5 and a review of our Safe Return Plan.
Thank you. Again, this plan was presented at the August board meeting for our return to school. We are not recommending any adjustments to that plan. Just kind of a quick overview, the big components of that were this year, we went with masks optional. The face coverings obviously were a part of that plan last year with different language. Our language this year was optional, we have seen some usage with our staff and students. But that's been limited a little bit in terms of who has chosen to take that option. The other piece that is different from this year to last year was that the only quarantines we are recommending are for COVID-positive individuals, either faculty or student. Our numbers thus far, we have had 41 staff positive and 203 students positive up to this point, up to this point in the school year. Coming up later in the action items, we have been working with WEA on a COVID leave amendment for this as far as for our staff members who have been COVID-positive and we'll talk a little bit about that later. But for your review, we do need to do this and just update the public on what we're doing. There are no other substantial changes to our return-to-school plan for this school year.
All right, thank you for that review and thank you to everybody that's been working through this. It's definitely been a challenge and things seem to be going smoothly. And I think that's to give hats off to the teachers and administrators and the parents and the students. So, everybody's working together to get through it. Item 6.6, the first reading of policy, GBE-C.
Earlier this fall, we brought, this is our update to our staff portion. Earlier this fall, we adopted a medical marijuana policy for students. This is the update in the event we have staff members who require medical cannabis. And so, this is only a first reading, no action required. But in red are the changes with regards to recommended policy language for our, the policy is actually GBE-C, use of alcohol and other drugs by employees. And this was in consultation with our state organizations, so we are recommending these changes. We'll post it for the month and bring it back for a second reading and request for approval in January.
Are there any more comments or questions on this, it's just a first reading? So, if the public has any input, they can certainly bring it between now and the next board meeting.
Correct, it will be posted on the website for public comment.
All right, then, if there's no more on the discussion items, we'll move to the action items. And first of all, 7.1, the approval of the bills.
I move approval of the bills.
Motion by Mr. Stein. And a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the bills, any comments or questions on any of the items in the bills? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 7.2, go through the personnel items and first of all, 7.2.1, the authority to hire.
Yes, I'd like to bring forth to you the Assistant Nutrition Service Director as authority to hire.
I move approval of the authority to hire as presented.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
I will second.
And a second by Ms. Lor, is there any comments or questions on this item?
Yes, I will provide information as it relates to the position. This is a position in support of the district's nutrition service program. This is an updated position based off of previous job responsibilities and the need for additional support. The salary of this position will range between $45,000 to $50,000, dependent on experience. The position will assist in overseeing all aspects of the district nutrition program to include planning, assessing, implementing, and evaluating the program in order to meet the nutritional needs of children as it relates to the student nutrition program. The performance responsibilities will include assistance with training and supervising school lunch personnel, with emphasis on communication to building managers in regards to the weekly menu, ensuring daily meal counts, and substitution of food products, as well as supervising delivery of cooked food to each location. The approval of this authority to hire is recommended in support of the district's federal food service program.
Any other questions, comments? And just to clarify, this is a Assistant Nutrition Services Director, not the Food Services Director that will also be an open position.
Correct. They will have now, per the resignation acceptance, a director opening as well as this position, which would be the Assistant Director of Nutrition Services.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? All in favor of approving the authority to hire, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.2.2, resignations.
Yes, as for resignations, we have five classified resignations. We do have a certified resignation that we would like to recommend we waive the penalty. And then we have an activity position that's pending suitable replacement.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I move approval of the resignations.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Lor to approve the resignations as presented. Any comments or questions on those? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You'd think I'd learned to wait. 7.2.3, contract recommendations and addendums.
Yes, in these contract recommendations and addendums, we're covering classified. We have activity positions, certified positions as well.
Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the contract recommendations and addendums.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Lor. Any questions? All in favor of approving these contract recommendations and addendums, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 7.2.4, terminations.
Yes, we have two terminations for your consideration. One is Casey Heine, and one is Laura Williams.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on the terminations? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move to the property items under 7.3. First of all, point one is consider the 2021, 2022 COVID-19 employee leave procedure.
Thank you. This employee leave procedure is to encompass the 2122 school year and to include retroactive leave reinstatement for active employees who are out on COVID leave for personal confirmed cases dated July 1, 2021 to present. Employees covered under the master and classified master contract shall be allowed up to 10 days or FTE equivalent of 80 hours of COVID leave to be used in support of a personal positive and confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19. This leave designation is only to be used in support of the employee's confirmed case and is subject to documentation from a healthcare provider confirming the diagnosis. The leave procedure includes a statement that if quarantine time is lifted or minimized, the leave procedure will be updated to follow current guidelines. It is recommended to approve this leave procedure for the 2122 school year.
Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the employee leave procedure as just outlined.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Iverson. Is there comments or questions on that section? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. 7.3.2, we need to look at amending the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you. As noted previously, the American Rescue Plan is required to be reviewed, available for public comment and amended if necessary every six months. The amendments to the plan include financial impacts of an increase to technology supports for enhancement of learning in the amount of $95,000 to accommodate the full accommodation to the elementary buildings with interactive panels, and a decrease of $95,000 to opportunities for extended learning in the category of early learning initiatives, leaving the accommodation at $138,942 to address any initiatives in support of the early learning program. It is recommended to amend this plan as presented.
All right. Could we have a motion, please?
I move to accept this, the amended American Rescue Plan.
Motion by Mr. Iverson. And a second by Ms. Moulton. Any comments on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. We're on to 7.4, and the 2022, 2023 school year calendar.
Yes, thank you. You have before you a proposed calendar for the 2223 school year. A thank you to our committee. Ms. Moulton represented the school board on that committee. And thanks to the other folks who are on that. We did conduct a pre-meeting survey of our staff for some input into this year's calendar, so that went very smoothly thanks to that information. But again, in August, with the first day of school on Thursday, the 25th, it says teacher in-service in there, but built into that, teacher in-service on the 22nd and 23rd. We started this last year with the COVID return. It is a pre-parent teacher conference, day-night at each school, so that'll either be on the 22nd or 23rd again at each building, with the opposite day being a teacher in-service day. And then you can see the rest of the calendar, all the way through to a dismissal of May 24th. This year's calendar, due to how the breaks fell and everything, does not include a built-in snow day. So any snow days would be made up starting on May 25th, 2023.
Okay, could we first get a motion to approve this calendar?
I move approval of the calendar as presented.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
I'll take Carrie's second. All right, second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the 2022, 23 calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. 7.5, consider the 2122 supplemental budget.
Thank you. The proposed supplemental budget provides modifications to the 202122 budget to accommodate increased revenue allocations and offset expenditures. In the general fund, an increase of revenue in the amount of $650,700 to accommodate online learning instruction, as well as support to the positions of literacy coaches, interventionists, instructional coaches, and academic recovery as funded under SR3. This increase in revenue allows for a decrease in operating transfer in from the capital outlay fund. The approved authority to hires of the colony teacher and colony paraprofessional is offset by use of cash on hand in this fund. The approved December employee bonus payment is a noted increase in the amount of $223,230 and is seen as an increase in expenditure allocations throughout the supplemental budget under the funds of special education, food service, and Lake Area Technical College. Please note that there was a savings in these funds due to the premium free month, but we still have to increase the allocations under the expenditure line items for the approved payment. Revenue allocations under SR2 and 3 in the amount of $524,000 under the fund of capital outlay were increased in support in enhancements identified to the elementary buildings specific to interactive panels, as well as the accommodation of iPads at the intermediate level. An increase was made in support of scoreboard sponsorship agreements through the district's project of replacement to scoreboards and digital advertisements placed on the board. This $54,000 increase revenue line item will operate under the terms for the next five years as the agreement spans. Special education accommodates three authority to hires of paraprofessional support in the amount of $80,655, with offset provided by use of cash on hand. Food service saw an increase in USDA emergency operating funds, in which the district approved a food service bonus payment in September for current food service staff in the amount of 500 per individual, as well as 250 for new hires who complete 30 days of employment. Lake Area Technical College sees an increase in state funds related to the Community Health Grant, the Upskills Program, services provided under the pilot program, and an increase in federal revenue support of $2,108,700 under the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, which supports several expenditure line items, increasing equipment needs for specific departments, as well as updates to furniture and the need for new accommodations. Other areas of expenditure allocation include the reallocation of expenditures as noted under equipment needs between departments, as well as reallocation provided in support of federal and localized offset supports. Educare received childcare stabilization funding, which offset payroll expenditures in the amount of $12,200, as well as the support to families in that program. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, could we get a motion to approve the 202122 supplemental budget as presented? Motion by Mr. Iverson. And a second by Ms. Moulton. Are there any questions or comments on supplemental budget items? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.6, the student enrollment requests.
Thank you. We have no open enrollments for your approval this evening. And for 7.6.2, the 132810s, we do have two of them recommended for your approval.
Could we have a motion to approve these 132810s?
I move approval of the 132810s.
Motion by Mr. Stein. And a second by Ms. Moulton. Comments or questions on those? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. We'll go into our communications section, and 8.1, administrative reports.
Yeah, thank you. I'm passing along to the school board a thank you from our staff at last month's meeting. The board approved the premium free month for the district health insurance, as well as a $500 bonus here to be paid out on Wednesday, the 15th. So passing along the appreciation for that decision and willingness to do that for our staff. Coming up here right before Christmas, a reminder to the public, we, at the K-12 side, we do have Christmas break from December 23rd to January 2nd. And I think, Mike, your semester actually ends Friday, right? Yes, so Lake Area wraps up on Friday for students. And then a big thank you to Mike Lawrence. He made a generous offer to K-12 and Lake Area faculty to attend a concert at his new location at the old Shopko Building, 212 Plaza, I believe it's called. We, Studio 212, my apologies to Mike there for getting the name wrong right away. But appreciate the generous offer to our staff. Nice little deal there, so. And then just a little legislative update. Mike mentioned the percentage that the governor put in. That 6% was also the recommended increase for K-12 funding, and that would be to the ongoing state aid. 6% as far as what the total would be for the state. And so we're appreciative of that starting point for the legislative session that'll be coming up here in January, as well as looking forward with interest at what other bills there might be. We've heard some rumblings about certain bills. And on Friday, Tammy and Carrie and our district administration staff will be meeting with our Watertown area legislators. Both, Mike's got one over at the Lake Area side, and then we'll meet with them on some K-12 issues here ahead of the break. So appreciate those folks working and representing the Watertown area for the legislative session.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Danielson. Item 8.3, is there anything the board has to report to the superintendent at this time?
I would just like to share that on December 8th, we lost one of our longtime bus drivers, Don Harrington. So I just wanted to send out prayers to his family and share a little bit with our transportation director, Wade Heiser, had to say about him. He said, "Don recently told me he missed four days of work, including a half a day to attend his grandmother's funeral. He was so much more than reliable. I used video footage of his route to show new bus drivers how a bus ride for the Watertown School District should look. All of his students respected Don, and he never had to raise his voice. Over 35 years, Don had many, many second-generation riders. Over the past few months, Don would stop in to check on me and to make sure everything was going okay on his route. Don always stopped the conversation, gave me a real serious look, and asked, 'Is my bus still yellow?' Don will be greatly missed by all of them at the Transportation Department and the entire Watertown School District." So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Heidi. Is there anything else?
I would just like to add, I know we've got some people in the audience tonight, and they're maybe people I wouldn't recognize by face, but by name as far as correspondence. And just to note to the public that we do listen at times. I know Mr. Stein indicated that earlier, that, you know, the progress might not be as quick as people would want from an action standpoint. But there are people listening and trying to do what's right. And that, from a school standpoint, I echo many of the comments that our folks are coming and they're trying to do the best they can. And our food service staff in particular has one goal in mind, and that's feeding children. And I greatly appreciate personally, but also as the superintendent in the district, we appreciate the people who come in every day and make sure that that food gets served and don't want them to lose heart that their voices are not heard either. And so thank you for participating in the process and for continuing to have faith in us that we will try and do what's right by the children here at the Watertown School District. So thank you for that moment.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Moulton. Second by Mr. Iverson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season.